Okay, all right.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so we'll move, we'll go from C directly to E. Anything else?
No, sir, no further changes.
Okay, do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move for approval of agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Move, okay, move to second discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Adam Tumas Cannon?
Is the consent agenda.
Any changes to the consent, or any, if they want to discuss on consent agenda?
Move.
Okay.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Item number three are our public hearings. First, we have our uncontested...
It wasn't unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were voting in opposition to the consent agenda?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Item three are our public hearings. First, we'll start with our uncontested rezoning cases. Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, the first case is P sixteen fifteen. It's a rezoning of 3.06 acres from A1 to R forty. There was no opposition at the planning board meeting, and the planning board recommended unanimously to approve.
This time I'll open the public hearing. Are there speakers?
There are no speakers.
No speakers. Board, what is your pleasure? The two motions. Case P sixteen fifteen.
All right. I move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the twenty-third of growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff and included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, and the minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second motion would be to approve the request of R...
First of all, let's get a second on that motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. In the discussion, all in favor of the first motion?
Unanimous.
Second motion.
Okay, move to approve the request of R forty residential district as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda packet and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second. Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous. The next case is case P sixteen dash sixteen.
Yes, ma'am, this is a rezoning of 1.13 acres from A1 to R forty. Again, there was no opposition at the planning board meeting, and they did recommend unanimously for approval.
Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing. Are there speakers, madam clerk?
There are no speakers.
No speakers. I'll close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, board? First motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the twenty-third of growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, and minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, I'll second the motion. In discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, second motion.
Move to approve the request for R forty residential district as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda packet as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Okay, move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
The next case is P sixteen dash seventeen.
Yes, this is a rezoning of twenty acres from RR Rural Residential down to A1 Agricultural. Again, there was no opposition at the planning board meeting, and the planning board recommended unanimously for approval.
Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing. Madam clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure? Need first motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the twenty thirty growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendation of the planning staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, second motion?
Move to approve the request for A1 agricultural district as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda packet as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Move to second in discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
The next case is case three E that moved up from the contested cases, cases P, case P sixteen dash eighteen.
Yes, this is a rezoning of sixty-six acres from R thirty residential density development conditional zoning for sixty-six lot residential subdivision to R thirty residential and agricultural. There was one gentleman in opposition at the planning board meeting after he had explained to him that the developer would actually be doing less lots with this request. He's in agreement, so he's no longer in opposition. The planning board did recommend unanimously for approval.
Okay. Open the public hearing, madam clerk, any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure? First motion?
Move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the twenty thirty growth plan and any applicable land use reasonable in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendation of the planning staff included in the agenda packet.
Second. Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Second motion?
Move to approve the rezoning for R thirty except for the proposed A1 on the northwest section, which should be A1 as recommended by the planning staff.
Second.
Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
The next case is case three D. It's a contested rezoning case, case P sixteen dash zero two.
Yes, the first slide there shows a general location map. The general location does show that this property is located directly west from Highway eighty-seven on School Road. The subject property is shown there in a hatch pattern. It's just a little bit under twenty-six acres. It shows the requested rezoning of currently zoned A1, and they are requesting R forty. It originally came in as an R forty density development where they could manipulate the lots and conserve open space, R thirty, I'm sorry, density development. We talked the applicant into going down to R forty where they were just under one acre lots, which is what R forty allows. Current zoning in that area consists mostly of A1 agricultural and some R forty shown between the subject property and School Road. Current land use in the area shows Grace Creek Community Center and School shown in blue, Grace Creek Christian Center, and number four would be Judy's Classic Hairstyles. Yellow shows single-family residential with SW designating a single-wide manufactured home. The hydrox slide shows some small amount of hydrox soil on the property, not much. Water and sewer will not be available. This site will be served by well and septic. The lots will be served. This came to the planning board. Again, Grace Creek is another area that's been developing rapidly over the last several years. There was a plan done. We have other plans that address this area. I think it's going to come out, and you all know, and the planning department and planning board are advocates of sooner or later water, public water being down Grace Creek as well as other areas of the county, but needed very much in the Grace Creek area. So the issue, some of the issues at hand that came out at the planning board were a low water table, and there is opposition tonight, which would have possible detrimental effects of the septic tanks on the, on the well water. But on the other hand, the planning board had to struggle with the uses that are allowed in the A1 district currently with respect proximity to other housing and the school. And, and also the issue that we did have when we did the twenty thirty plan, the farmland advisory committee, where, one, the farmers, basically their issue is that this is their retirement, this land, and it's not going to be farmed because nobody in their family is going to farm it. We are trying to keep development at real rural densities until someday we do get public water in Grace Creek. So the other issue was that as well as, you know, the additional housing. The uses allowed in A1 range from outdoor entertainment and different, all types of housing where an R forty would only have stick-built housing. So they struggled with those issues, and eventually the planning board voted six-three to recommend approval of the R forty request.
Any questions for Mr. Lloyd at this point?
I just, I just have one, and I get a lot of calls, or some calls from out there in terms of the runoff over into, you know, the runoff, the standing water and all of that in terms of some of the development that's happening out there in Grace Creek. Was that one of the considerations? Or, I know when y'all went out there and looked at it, you'd be able to tell.
Right, and the raw land, we would be able to tell. In this particular area, no, you do have some opposition, but that was not one of their main points of opposition. The soils are fairly good here, and Grace Creek as a whole isn't near as bad as the more north you go into Cedar Creek and further north than that. So yes, there are some bad areas, and they're magnified by development that was done like you saw last month prior to DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, doing any drainage planned analysis, which they would be doing now. So at this particular site, to my knowledge and what came out the planning board, no runoff wouldn't be a problem. But again, it depends on how it's developed, and that they have to follow their plan, drainage plan.
So when you talk about, I guess when they were talking about worrying about the septic tanks, they were talking about the water density being drained so that the rest of them, some of the issues are going to be with the other adjoining properties, I guess? Is that what?
Yes, that they, right, the adjoining properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, I think one of the things that we need to be conscious of when we talk about all this is we throw out R forty and stuff, and the public who may be watching or listening may not understand exactly what that means. But in this particular scenario, this person who owns that land could put in one house per every two acres, correct?
Currently, yes, sir.
Currently, yes. And what they're asking for is basically one house per every acre.
Yes, sir, and it, and it would be one stick-built house in R forty, whereas in A1 you could put class A, B manufactured housing, as well as an amalgam of other uses, including commercial.
Right, so there is a little bit more security of having a higher level of a house in an R forty as you would maybe in an A1?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You had a slide back, if you don't mind going back. There showed some new construction that looked like coming in, and could you show me where that was in relation to the map? I thought, yeah, there. Can you show me on the map?
That triangular-shaped property across School Road.
Okay, now, that's A1, though?
Yes, sir.
Even the part for the development? So that's, those lots are two acres?
Yes, I don't believe that that's a zero lot line, so they would be at least two acres.
And you got a little section of R forty up there, just above A1.
Yes, sir. That was rezoned back in twenty fourteen.
Has there been any traffic concerns about this many new houses with the school?
Not that really was emphasized at, at the planning board meeting, and... I'm trying to get the average daily count. Well, the average daily traffic count is eight hundred on School Road currently, and it is a collector's street.
If you will, Mr. Chairman, just follow up. So how many, how many different allowable parcels would there be at, at R forty?
At R forty, you would be allowed approximately twenty-four. You have to take out fifteen, roughly fifteen percent for road, taking up that area.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four units, yes.
They could all be on septic tanks?
Yes.
They could all be on septic tanks all the way down to R thirty, though, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but R forty?
And originally, like I say, he did come in at R thirty, and the staff talked to him and see what he wanted, and convinced him to come back in as regular R forty.
I would think that's reasonable. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing. Madam clerk, are there speakers?
We have two speakers, one in opposition, one in favor. In favor, I would call Mr. Tim Evans.
Okay, before Tim comes up, Ms. Cannon, would you read the rules for comments on the public hearing on zoning? They're different, right?
Yes, on zoning hearings, arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of ten minutes for each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the ten-minute time is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side.
Okay, here, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Chairman Faircloth and County Commissioners. My name is Tim Evans. I reside at twenty-two fifty-six Cypress Lakes Road. I have lived in Grace Creek for thirty years. It's been a fast thirty years, and I've watched the growth. I will elaborate on some of the things that y'all mentioned across the street, but the first thing I would like to say is I'm representing Jeff DeVore, who inherited these two tracts, the one that you've seen that has been already developed. We're almost through with that subdivision, and we're proud to say that that subdivision is bringing two hundred and thirty dollars a square, a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot, and our price point in there has been four hundred thousand plus. We've, we have took out very little trees over there. It's a beautiful little subdivision. Across the street, as you can see, on the A1, predominantly field, and in that tree line, there's two to three irrigation ponds which will not be touched. Forty Site Solutions has done a preliminary for us on this, and we can only get twenty-two lots versus twelve lots if we were to go A1. Now, the one thing that I would like to say on Jeff's behalf and for the DeVore family, his mother taught at Grace Creek School. She retired after twenty-seven years, and she sold the school system, ten acres of this track for their drain fill when Grace Creek Elementary School needed more drain fill, and his grandmother donated the Christian Center and gave that to the community that is also a part of this subject track. Jeff's land, Jeff's home is contiguous to this tract of land. Right to the right of the R forty is where Jeff lives and has for years, which was his grandmother's home that he has restored, and his wife's shop is there. The land has been already mykeers, so scientists has went, went out and done all the tests on the land, and most of it is good as the soil map shows. I would like to say this. What our plans are across the street naturally will not be of what you see on the other side. It will be smaller lots. Our price point there will be two fifty to three. Crawl space, no vinyl, no box houses. Across the street, crawl space, no vinyl, brick, stone, or hardy. Jeff lives there, and he really wants this developed right. It is his inheritance, and we would like for this board to see that he cares about this land by what we've done across the street. We think it would be a good fit for the neighborhood. Naturally, Grace Creek is changing, and I would, I would ask that you see this in our favor. Thank you very much.
Speaker in opposition is Mr. Will Walters.
Thank you, board. How do I do that? Oh, you do the control. I'd like to speak in opposition due to what all of you have raised the point tonight. In the surrounding area of the Grace Creek School is all zoned A1. Our family land, which is on the southeast side there and across the road, is A1. All the developments that have already taken place, including what the owner of this proposal, which is a good friend of mine, Jeff DeVore, he did a great job across the road, Edgewood Farms, the point you brought up. This was zoned A1. They are not two-acre lots. Correct me if I'm wrong. The density was used because there's part of it is wetlands. Some of them are two acres, some are less.
All two acres plus.
I'm sorry. Okay, but, okay, two acres plus. But it's not exactly two acres. But even the better, two acres plus. During the planning board, I think Charles Morris led a wrong direction, which convinced to some of the, the board members. We were six to three, and I think it was led in the wrong way because of the use of A1. Can have covenants on it, which does in the surrounding area of Grace Creek. Fire Department Road, several areas have covenants of well-use land management. The school and the ten acres that Tim mentioned, that is a waste area for Grace Creek, for the sewage for Grace Creek Elementary School. There's no water or sewer. We're currently having water problems in this surrounding area. The ten acres is sixty feet from this proposal. Grace Creek School, who did not even know about this proposal, I called and talked to Cal Valet. They're at capacity, twenty-two-plus homes, or twenty-two homes, would bring in a substantial number of people that are entering School Road within a school zone on a major curve where Yarborough Road is. We have considerable interest from Cumberland County Schools, from Cumberland County Parks that I've talked to Jeff about, that are very interested in this. To me, zoning R forty in the middle of all the existing zoning, that is done well. All the way down, there's not another one. There is A1 zero lot line density zoning on King Hearn, but it's still A1 zoning, just the density is used different. The water quality is a concern, the septic system, and it's in the middle of what's all zoned A1, so.
Okay.
I vote to leave it A1.
Ms. Counsel?
All right, this is the second time, I believe, we have heard this case. We sent it back to the planning board. Is this?
No, ma'am, that case that we sent back last month will be going to the planning board tomorrow night.
Okay, all right. But A1 is the recommendation of both the planning board and the planning staff?
R forty.
R forty, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
A1, I am not, well, maybe I am dizzy from looking down and looking over. But if I remember correctly, when I studied this case, A1 was the, going from A1 to R forty was the best use for this particular property. I know that we have overgrown schools. As long as we have land, unless we wanted to keep the schools the way they are, we're going to have some kind of development. That's why we redistrict the students, I guess.
And, and I do see the superintendent of schools in the morning, every morning, actually, and when he has had questions about his zoning case, he has brought them up. One of the, the main objective we have seen in the past with what use goes around schools is commercial because of convenience stores.
Yes.
Which is allowed in the A1. I think that's one of the uses that the planning board felt like wouldn't be compatible around the school.
Mr. Chairman, I read the material. If there are no questions, I'm ready for a motion.
I got, Mr. Keith coming. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, I do have some questions. On A1, you had mentioned something, they're not allowed zero lot line development in R forty, are they?
Yes, sir. All, all zero lot line does is it allows you to manipulate the size of lots, but the overall density doesn't change. For example, for every one acre lot, you need a two-acre lot.
Right, but the question was before, were there two acres or one acre? So in reality, if you have a zero lot line, you could have a house on a half-acre lot as long as at the end game.
Yes, sir.
You had another lot at three acres.
Right.
So it does allow for zero. The other thing is, have, has there been a site plan of where, where the entrance is going to be for this?
I don't think we've got a site plan yet, have we? Not on this development, no.
I guess I'd have to ask, is...
It's, I will answer your question. With, with respect to the land in front of it, it's, it should go through the arrow right there, right where that little strip is that the, she's pointing to right there, right to the left of R forty, the R would be the entrance back into this area.
Okay. The planning board had, although they did approve, there was opposition. And what was the, the main, the main crux of the opposition of the?
There was other speakers. I think Mr. Edge, Mr. Phil Edge was there, and his main concern...
I mean, the board members.
Oh, the board members. They really didn't state. They just listened to the, the two sides, and the only one that, that really spoke up was Vice Chair Morris on the uses that are allowed in the A1 versus the R forty. So they really, they didn't verbalize too much, the ones that voted in, in opposition.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our speakers or Mr. Lloyd? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to find the request for rezoning consistent with the twenty-third of growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest and for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Adams, Chairman Faircloth, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Evans, voting in opposition.
Excuse me.
I was a little late with my hand.
You're in favor, Commissioner Lancaster, thank you. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Keith.
Nobody want to vote with me.
Okay. Okay, the second motion?
I move to approve the rezoning for R forty residential district as recommended by the planning staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second in the discussion, all in favor?
Is that unanimous?
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Cannon?
Next, we have some minimum housing code enforcement cases. Item three F is case number MH thirteen seventy dash two thousand and sixteen. Mr. Walters.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First case tonight. This case MH one-three-seven-zero dash two-zero-one-six. Property owner is Thomas Wyatt McKinney, Jr. Property is located at thirty-two, or, excuse me, thirty-six oh-two and thirty-six thirty-eight McBride Street. This is a heavily dilapidated structure that's unsecure. There's also, as you can see, a RV on the property and a dilapidated mobile home. We're seeking an order for demolition.
This time I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, madam clerk?
There are no speakers.
No speakers, I'll close the public hearing. Board?
This is the one that came before us back in May, I mean, we, back in April, wasn't it?
No, sir.
It wasn't? I thought we gave them till...
No, sir, that was, that was a different property altogether.
Something might not look alike.
No, I mean, I'm just reading like it says, says the property with legal service ordered repair.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
That property was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I think somebody else...
That property, Mr. Adams, was on Clinton Road.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum... I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspectors as true facts in this case and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within...